Good evening, everyone. Thank you for waiting. The time is 7:31. We are now going to start the regular city council meeting. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Yes. Councilman Bliss?
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Corbett? Councilman Fleming?
Here.
Councilor Rorback?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Grassime?
I'm here. Can I please have a motion to excuse Mayor Protem Corbett? He did give notice.
I'll make a motion, Your Honor, that we excuse Councilman Corbett.
All right, thank you. Can I get support?
Second. Support.
Okay. Thank you. A motion has been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Mayor Protem Corbett has been excused. The indication this evening will be led by Councilor Rorback, and following that, she will be leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Rorback?
My apologies.
Starting with a bang.
In the spirit of community and a sense of purpose in our work, let us commence the discovery of our strengths, our concerns, our grief, and our joy. Let this journey be one of love, authenticity, and purpose. Let us shape our lives, our work, and our days as an expression of that joy, that love, and our commitment to service and to each other. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to three principles which stand: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor?
That's Rorback.
I would like to make a motion to add to the agenda a change in the appointment of the council alternate to the Human Relations and Equity Commission.
All right, and that would be under?
I believe. I'm not sure. Under C, maybe?
Communications? All right, so that would be two motions. One would be to accept the resignation of Councilman Soltis, and then another to make an appointment?
Correct.
All right, is there support of these two additions?
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Are there any other additions or deletions?
Your Honor?
Counselor?
I'd like to make a motion to remove public-- or, excuse me, the public hearing, right? Is it number one, the street vacation?
All right.
Twenty-one dash zero one.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Sherman?
That request to delete from the agendas was made by the petitioners, so that should be included in the motion if the makers agrees and if support agrees. They've asked that it be deleted.
Yeah, so moved.
Mr. Fleming, you agree?
Yeah, I will support this motion, amended motion.
All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Item has been deleted as requested by the petitioner. Are there any other additions or deletions this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move into public hearings. First up is A2, the special approval for 2106. Dash, that's for 233 and 239 West Eleven Mile Road, sale of secondhand automobiles. Ms. Marsh?
Yes, Cia Chen has requested special approval for the sale of secondhand automobiles at 233 and 239 West Eleven Mile Road, Zoned B3 General Business District. The subject properties are located on the south side of West Eleven Mile, west of Brush Street, within the Downtown Development District. While the B3 district permits a range of commercial and office use, the proposed use is compatible with existing commercial land uses along West Eleven Mile Road. However, this site does not satisfy dimensional standards of the zoning ordinance or minimum parking requirement standards. If approved, the applicant will need to seek a variance from the ZBA for these deficiencies. Further, the proposed use is not consistent with the city's center future land use designation as contained in the 2021 master plan and is not consistent with the vision of the DDA district. In addition, the DDA board reviewed the proposed use and recommends denial. Based on the above-mentioned information, staff at the DDA recommend city council deny the special request 21-06 for 233 and 239 West Eleven Mile Road for the sale of secondhand automobiles due to the site not meeting dimensional standards for the zoning ordinance, not meeting minimum parking space requirements, and not being consistent with the 2021 master plan designation or the vision of the DDA board. And I believe that the petitioner is here today.
All right, thank you. We are going to open this up for public hearing, so this is public comment specifically about A2. We will have public comment for other items and for just general, but right now, if anyone has something they would like to say regarding this special approval, this would be the time I ask that you come to the podium. Please give your name or any other identifying of the city. Please go ahead.
Good evening. I'm the Robert Jackson. I'm the pastor of the church right next door. Our property, the way it sets up, we completely surround that area. Our concerns was exactly what it said, the parking, of course. We get concerned about possibility of, you know, people coming, using our lot to park in while they look next door, and we have liabilities that we are concerned about. We're concerned about the runoff, how that would be handled. We're concerned about, there's actually, I don't know if anyone's seen the actual lot, but there is a massive huge tree in the backyard that if you start digging around to put a parking lot in, that has to go. Certain things like that, that we get concerned about. We want to be good neighbors for whoever gets put in there. We'll work with them. However, those are our concerns, that the possibility of certain things that would happen out of their control, probably, but we did painstakingly take time. We have signs up that says unauthorized use will be towed, and we don't want to be that kind of person. You know, that's the only, that's our concerns. We haven't seen the plan, and I'm sure there is one, but we haven't seen the plan for that, for that use there. But I've said it all the way along, there's no way you can, there's not a parking. There's just not. And then what's going to happen? By, is both pieces going to become commercial? Because it was residential and commercial at one point. Is that both going, is it all going to become commercial? How is it going to be zoned? And what's going to be actually viable to put there, whether it's this or something else? We want to be good neighbors. We really do. But those are our concerns, because we do have insurance liabilities that's there, and we have to conform to what our insurance, because, you know, we can't afford a $2 million lawsuit if someone slips and falls in our, that's all. So, other than that, we're not going to stay in the way of progress. And we would work with any neighbor that moves in, but those are our concerns. And if you will take those, maybe you could ask those questions, you know, through the body, however it is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Is there anyone else who wanted to comment this evening regarding the property on Eleven Mile?
Hi, Jennifer Zmarzlik, 649 East Harwood. I am a member of the DDA. I was part of the vote to unanimously recommend that we don't rezone that spot because of what the pastor said. So, we disagree with that one. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to comment about the property on Eleven Mile? I want to give the opportunity, the... Did you want to speak? If it's your property, would you like to speak, or your potential property?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Ran. I'm one of the members from MIST Group. And so far, I have heard about a great concern regarding parking in the proposed location. And for, to answering that question, so I have two points I want to put forward. One is, we are actually positioning ourselves as a high-end luxury used car dealership. So, we are not kind of a used car dealership which will buy and sell a bunch of very, like, low-value cars and which might overwhelm the whole, like, property area. So, only keep, like, maybe on the average, like, a reasonable amount of vehicle in our space. And the second point is, we have actually put a lot of effort during the, I mean, the site plan. So, actually, there is some free space on the whole puzzle. And we have made, like, the comprehensive site plan which tells us, like, there will be around a space of over 20 parking lots for just inventory vehicles and about six to seven customer parking space. And talking about the nature of the used, like, a luxury used car dealership, we are now facing the situation like restaurants or regular retail stores that there might be a big group of customers coming in, coming out. Actually, we all have very limited, like, people or customers, maybe scheduled by appointment ahead of time, or maybe just a few people come together. So, that will not cause, like, a trouble that, like, many people come here and have no space for parking and maybe, like, use the, like, park their cars on the parking lots of the church. So, we will be really careful with that, because we do not want to cause any trouble to our neighbors. And we want to present, like, a very good image of our business and also, like, the image of the DDA, the downtown district area. So, hopefully, like, my words so far have answered, like, the questions from the neighbors and all the members from city council. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to comment about the Eleven Mile property?
My name's Carla Hinesley. I live in the area and about a block and a half away. My concern with luxury vehicles, it seems so out of place for that general area. I can see where a lot of people going up and down Eleven Mile could possibly see those vehicles, you know, young kids, 20, teenagers, whatever, want to stop and look at them, and could cause quite a lot of unintentioned parking in the parking areas around. And there's nothing really that could be done. It would be not their, there wouldn't be their fault. It wouldn't be anybody's fault, but those kind of vehicles, I'm afraid, would draw attention, and the kids would want to park and be looking at them. So, just a thought.
Thank you. Anybody else who wanted to comment on the Eleven Mile?
Sorry. Brother covert Edward E. of Newmaness Heights. There's already a car lot on the corner of Eleven and John R., correct? There's a car lot on, what is it, John R. and, I believe it's, I don't remember the name of the street, by Amory's Party Store. Then there's a car lot on Barrington and Eleven Mile. This is not the Troy Motor Mall. This is Eleven Mile Road in Madison Heights. Luxury cars, as a retired court clerk, what, they're parked out there. What's that going to do? Hi, stopped. They're big cars. Eleven Mile and I-75 is right there. Not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wanted to comment this evening on the Eleven Mile property?
I just wanted to ask if the clerk received an email, and that could be read.
We will be reading emails at the end of public comment from here. Yes, thank you. All right, seeing no, yeah, please, go ahead.
Hello, here's Jim from U.S.O.D. And I just add on some additional point. We actually have an exist business in 14 miles, John R. Road. And we are keep continuing our business, like, for about, like, one year. Actually, we are not, not like a normal dealership. I know there's a lot of dealership in the John R. Road, Eleven Mile, Twelve Miles. It's like, do the local business. A lot of people driving in and out. So, but most of our customer base is, like, from out of the county, maybe out of the state. And only very, very limited amount of the customer came, like, only around 20 customers per month. And most of our business is goes through the online or wholesale business. And also, the reason we chose this area is, like, we want to build an enclosed garage on the backyard of our exist building. And also, we're not, we're not really want to show the car, like, to the, on the street, like, people driving on the street and saw our luxury cars in our yard, our parking lot. It's, no, we plan to build an enclosed, also for our security. It's not that much cars will be parking in there. Maybe only, like, 15 to 20 in the backyard of the enclosed garage. Also, we already have a warehouse right on the Stevenson Highway. So, most of our inventories is parking in our warehouse. It's not showing to the public. And, yeah, also, talking about the zoning. So, currently, the both of the buildings, it's already zoned by the B3. I don't think we need to any rezone to our building. Also, because we are doing some, like, luxury cars business, we are, we will be very focused on our security system. Like, we will build, like, a surrounding camera, also the security wall or gate. We don't want to bring any trouble to the local neighborhood city. So, thank you. That's my point.
Thank you.
Just want to, in order to have a more picture of how it will look like. So, maybe to the, like, so this side first. So, this is Eleven Mile Road, and this is the backyard of the car, like, the property. So, most of the vehicles actually will not really be presented to, like, the, all the visitors or those people in the Eleven Mile Road. The vehicles will majorly stored in the back part. And the parking lot in the front, they are actually reserved for customers. So, these, also, there are the crashes, and maybe, like, it will cause people, I mean, maybe kids, children, some years, and cause actual, you know, parking concern. Actually, you see, missing the full plan. So, this area is already, this is in progress here. And they will put, like, six to seven, which one, for several people. These are the parking lots for customers. And the vehicles, vehicles will be stored back there, which includes buildings. Also, we are paying to deal with, like, the wall.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So, I think, I believe that this is in our packet, it's in the agenda packet. Is that correct? Have you seen this already?
That specific one isn't.
Yes. I mean, I couldn't. Well, okay, you may have one more comment, and then we're going to, I think we're going to close public comment, because usually people only speak once. But go ahead.
Well, I just have a question.
If you can come to the podium, please.
Yeah, real quick on it, if you don't mind. And that being, that's kind of have, you know, the parking lot on here, and here, and here, and here. What do you do with the vehicles when you have to get to this one? Where do they go?
Like, all these are the areas, we should, like, here, we need to, like, the wall.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close public comment here, and we have one or two emails that we're going to have this opportunity.
Yep, I just have one for this one. This is, says, "Board members, as a pillar in the community in the automotive retail business here in Madison Heights and at the same location for the past 35 years, I don't see how to justify another auto retail facility in an already competitive heavy market. And to consider doing, and right, I'm sorry, and to consider doing it right next door to another longstanding automotive retailer in Madison Motor Sales makes no sense. In a one-square-mile radius, you already have four auto retail facilities. I don't feel the population has grown enough to consider adding to an already heavy-populated auto retail business area." Joe Shiniker, Vice President, M&amp;M, Car Sales Incorporated.
All right, thank you. With that, what is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we concur with the staff recommendation and deny special request 21-6 for 233 and 239 West Eleven Mile Road for the sale of secondhand automobiles. And it's due to the site not meeting dimensional standards of the zoning ordinance, no minimum parking space requirements, and not consistent with the 2021 master plan designation or the vision of the DDA board.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Your Honor? I'll support. Sorry, Counselor Wright, did you say?
Say again?
Did you not support it? You just need to lean further.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to speak right into your microphone.
Sorry.
Okay, try this again. Okay. Is there support? Someone want to be recognized by the chair for support?
Your Honor, hi. I'd like to be recognized. I'll support.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. All right. Motion has been made and seconded to deny the special approval. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
That's Rorback.
I do want to say to the folks that have requested the special approval, I appreciate the work that you did to bring this all here, bring it together. My biggest issue is, it doesn't, it doesn't go with what our master plan is for the DDA. We want something, we want to build something different in our Downtown Development Authority area. And it just, that's my biggest concern with this. It doesn't fit within that designation. It doesn't fit within our vision for a downtown area and the city of Madison Heights. And so, that's, for that reason, I'm going to be voting to deny.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Rorback. Is there anyone else on council? Any other comments, any other discussion? All right, and seeing none, all in favor of denying the special approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against the denial, signify by saying no. All right, the not, unfortunately, the special approval has been denied, a motion of six to zero. I do encourage you to work with our Economic Development Department to see if there is a space outside of the DDA that would work better for you. But at this point, that has been denied. Thank you. Next up, we have from the DPS Director, the resolution supporting the Oakland County grant application. Ms. Marsh?
As part of the recently renewed Oakland County Parks Village, Oakland County Parks and Recreation has established a grant program for park projects and improvements in cities. Due to the time-sensitive nature of this grant, staff determined that it would be in the best interest to utilize pursuing supplemental funding to enhance the planned Ambassador Park tennis court project. While this is not a formal public hearing, a public comment period is required for grant submission. Funding is currently budgeted for the replacement of the failing asphalt tennis court service at Ambassador. By utilizing the currently $30,000 budgeted as a match, assuming grant approval, we would be able to include the replacement of the surrounding fence and consider other improvements, including a dual-use pickleball court, improved play servicing, and installation of backboards for single-player tennis. Staff is requesting that a public comment period be opened tonight for the purpose of soliciting any comments or resident feedback regarding this project. Following this public comment period, staff and I recommend that council approves supporting resolution for our grant application.
All right, thank you. At this point, I'm going to open the comments up for public hearing. So, if anyone from the public wants to specifically comment on this resolution for the grant application, we will open public comment for general in a few minutes. Please go ahead.
I'm back. Jennifer Zmarzlik, 649 East Harwood. This tennis court is in an area where I, when I first moved to Madison Heights, and it was pretty bad-looking back then. I would really love for our tennis team to have an extra spot to play when the regular courts are not available. And it would look really great from 13 Mile, because you can see it right from there, to be a great asset to the beauty of our city.
Thank you. Anybody else who wanted to comment regarding this grant?
Carla Hinesley, live in Madison Heights. I'm just curious. I go to that park a lot, and it seems kind of isolated when I'm there. I'm always looking over my back, because all the houses face away, and it's way back there. I'm just wondering if lights could be incorporated into that grant so that it could be lit up a little bit and not feel so isolated.
All right, thank you. Something we can look at?
Good evening. Jerry Zorigan, 31441, Eschewa, Madison Heights. Retired Parks Lover, is a current chairman of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, also 76-year resident of Madison Heights. I'm here to ask council to approve a supporting resolution for application to Oakland County for a grant to enhance our planned tennis court refurbishment project in Ambassador Park. After I retired in 2001, I would drive by Ambassador Park and see residents with their tennis rackets waiting to play because the two courts were being used. That was when the courts were still in good shape. Now, the residents go to Royal Oak and Warren to play tennis. Funding is currently budgeted to replace a failing asphalt tennis court service. However, if we could use the current, currently budgeted funding as a grant match, we would be able to include replacement of the surrounding fence and consider other improvements, including a dual-use picket ball court, improved play servicing, and installation of backboards for single-player tennis. This grant will help make the facility a focal point in our park system. I just want to bring up Councilman Bob Geddings passed away November 19th. He was Recreation Coordinator on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and Councilman. Bob always strived to give Madison Heights and its residents the best he could. Bob, my friend, you still will truly be missed. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge the tremendous job that Melissa Marsh, our city manager, Rosalind Grassime, our mayor, and city council are doing during this pandemic and funding restraints. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wanted to speak this evening regarding?
Bill Meier, 30328 Yorkshire Drive in Madison Heights. I know this probably doesn't scream tennis body to you guys, but when my younger kids were littler, we did enjoy playing tennis and had to go to Hamlich Park in order to do that. I also spoke with many members of our tennis team at high school. They weren't be able to make it tonight, but they sent me this note that whenever he and their friends want to play tennis, they go to Hamlich or Royal Oak to play tennis. or Royal Oak to play tennis, our courts are not in good shape, they're missing the nets, they're overtaken by other sports people. They would love to be able to play tennis in the city, especially with the backdrop so they could play all by themselves, so, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wanted to comment this evening about the grant? Okay, seeing none, I'm closing public comment.
Okay, this is from Jeremy Carroll, Madison Heights Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Vice Chairperson. I am writing to express my support for parks grant applications through Oakland County for Ambassador Park in Madison Heights. The tennis courts in the park are in very poor shape and residents of the city have a lack of good options to play the sport. If approved, the funding will also allow the city to install a pickleball court on the same surface along with fencing improvements. As a former college tennis player who is on the other side of the age of forty, I recently picked up pickleball. It's a fantastic game for people of all ages, but unfortunately, residents must travel to other communities such as Hazel Park and Royal Oak to take up this growing sport. It would be a fantastic addition to our park system and would give many of our older residents a new activity to participate in. I urge the Madison Heights City Council and Oakland County Parks and Recreation Commission to approve this project. And then I have another email from Brian Gettle, Madison Heights City Council Members. I would like to give my written support on the grant enhancement application for the tennis courts and park enhancements at Ambassador Park located at Thirteen Mile Road. I'm not able to attend tonight's meeting, but would like the council members to know that I do support the improvement and the accessible features that the city is trying to provide. The city has seen the need for the upgrade repair of the tennis court at Ambassador Park so the citizens of Madison Heights can fully utilize the benefits of the activities at the city park. The budget allowed for the tennis court service to be fixed, repaired. This would allow the Madison Heights residents to enjoy an outdoor activity within the city without traveling to other places to get the exercise of the sport. With the enhancement, not only is the surface fixed, repaired, but an improvement to the tennis court, new fence will be completed, but, but a new outdoor activity will be added. This will increase utilization of the park, but will benefit the life quality by maintaining, adding the outdoor activities. With this statement, I encourage City Council and the Oakland County Parks and Recreation Commission to consider the approval of the Madison Heights grant application. And then I have, the last one is from Nicole Fax. I'm writing about the Oakland County grant application to enhance tennis courts and add pickleball courts to Ambassador Park. As a seventeen-year resident of Madison Heights and a mother of two kids, I know well the value of our beautiful and functional park opportunities. Enhancing our city parks offer free, accessible, equitable opportunities for all of our families and from the surrounding, and those from surrounding communities. I support this particular opportunity and hope that we can include more enhancements in the future.
All right, thank you. Now that we've heard all that, what is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor.
Counselor Warbach.
I move that council approves a supporting resolution for the city of Madison Heights grant application to the Oakland County Parks and Recreation for supplemental funding to enhance Ambassador Park tennis court project.
Thank you, is there support?
Your Honor, I'll second.
All right, thank you, motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Your Honor. I think it's kind of a no-brainer, we don't often get to be in this type of position. We're, assuming we're able to get the grant, and right now we're just supporting the grant application in the resolution, but assuming we're able to get this, we're able to take money we've already budgeted for improvements and turn them into advancing our park system because we're able to get those grant dollars. So, I'm very supportive of it and I'm appreciative of our staff for continuously looking out for all of these incredible grants that we've been able to get recently and will continue to apply for, thank you.
All right, thank you, is there any other comments?
Your Honor.
Please.
I want to echo the same kind of sentiments, I'm really appreciative, first and foremost, to staff for, you know, doggedly pursuing these grant applications. They are long and laborious to get through and I appreciate all the work that goes into it. I also want to send thanks to our parks, our Oakland County Commissioner, Gary McGilvery. He is the Chair, I believe, of the Oakland County Parks Commission, in his role as Commissioner, and I know his, under his leadership, a lot of this stuff has, the groundwork has been laid over many years and he's finally able to see some of this come to fruition and I appreciate his work so much in this area, so I just wanted to put that on public record, thank you.
All right, thank you, is there any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Please.
Just real quick, I wanted to say that growing up, you know, I, I admit, I played racquetball most of the time and so during this COVID thing, I started picking up tennis. Of course, I, I got some nice rackets and so forth and then I went to Ambassador Park and, yeah, it needs, it needs some work and I understand that and I'm glad that we're able to do that, or hopefully able to do that if we are awarded that grant. And, I mean, it is a little slippery and the nets aren't the greatest and, but, but I really look forward to this and that's why I'd be voting for it.
Thank you, anyone else on council, any, any comments? All right, I will also be voting in favor of this and just over the last few years, I've had a couple of different people reach out to me regarding tennis courts and pickleball, so I think this is very timely. And with that, all in favor of supporting this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries, six-zero, thank you. Next up, we have meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak to us on pretty much anything that you want. I ask that you take three minutes, that you identify yourself, address business, something that relates you to the city, and with that, I'm going to open the meeting up to the public.
Martha Kovard, Edward Avenue. This wasn't planned to speak about tonight, but that health center or clinic, maybe it is, on Twelve Mile, where people get their COVID tests done, okay. Today was the second time I was almost hit head-on because they parked to the corner of that street and when people are trying to come off Twelve Mile, they can't stop, it's Twelve Mile Road. So they're trying to come in and as you're coming up the street, I mean, it was inches away. This lady literally burst into tears because she, we were that close. Something needs to be done. Last year, the residents had a problem with the masks and everything being left all over. Now we have this situation, that, I'm sorry, something's got to be done, this is crazy. People are going to get hurt. On a better note, I wanted to say thank you to Quinn. Vida said that you picked up the supplies for the volunteers for the food pantries lunch. That was very nice of you, I would have done it, but thank you. The grant that you talked about for the tennis courts, that's great. Can, can somebody look for a grant for like our disabled community? These guys are forgotten all the time unless it's their month, then everybody wants to. They're, they're here all year long, can we please look into that? That would be really nice and I want to congratulate, I saw on the online agenda where the HREC put in for, I think it was a grant for four thousand dollars for the Juneteenth. If that could have been done last year, that sure would have helped a lot, but I'm, I'm very proud of them for doing it and picking up the baton and making it better this year. Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wanted to make a comment, yeah, please?
My name is Cindy Crox, I'm here tonight to represent one of the small businesses on Stevenson Highway. I'm the General Manager for the Madison Club Bar and I want to say thank you for the tent, you know, the temporary permits for the tent and stuff, it's made a big difference and it's still brought, through the struggle, it's still brought people in because they felt safe, they were able to sit outside if it got a little busy inside or whatever. And I'm just looking tonight, hopefully ask for an extension, maybe till, at least till June, to keep it going. The COVID numbers are really still high and I, you know, I want to keep everybody safe. And we're struggling as it is and it just makes it, they have nowhere to go outside if we get, you know, people want to be comfortable, we space it out and stuff, but still, they want to be comfortable. Some feel better sitting outside, they'll still come in, they'll get a burger, they'll go outside because they feel comfortable and they feel safe. So I'm looking to please get an extension, just for a few more months, maybe to get it through this cold weather and stuff too, till things get better. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to pull my mask down, my wife said I mumble all the time. I'm a sixty-five-year resident of the city of Madison Heights, I'm a customer at the Madison Club. The point we got is, this COVID is killing us again. We don't like sitting inside, we hate sitting inside. We got people, we know that's got stage four lung cancer, they can't be sitting inside these places. It's not a forty thousand square foot building. We like sitting outside, having our beer, and that's it. Plain and simple. Let me get a beer and for another six months and we get it over with. Really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
What was that, let's say my name?
That would be great.
Oh, Joel Dunn, one-five-eight-four-West Thirteen Mile, Madison Heights.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. All right, is there anyone else? Thank you, is there anyone else who wanted to speak?
Jennifer Zmarzlik, six-four-nine East Harwood. I didn't realize there was a situation at Madison Club, but it sounds to me like it would be, you know, I, I, I would support the adjustment of the, the extension. And the other thing I wanted to mention was to give support to the resolution supporting the application to the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs mini-grant from, for the HREC, I would like to support that as a resident, thank you.
All right, thank you, is there anyone else who wanted to speak this evening? All right.
This is from Nicole Fax. She would like to ask City Council to support the Human Relations and Equity Commission application for a four thousand dollar mini-grant from the Michigan Council for the Arts and Cultural Affairs to support the 2022 Juneteenth event. As you know, the 2021 event was a proud moment for our city and particularly important due to the federal holiday establishment the same year. I have been excited to join the HREC this year as an alternate commissioner and appreciate the opportunity to offer my skills to support my community. Prior to the December meeting, HREC commissioners reviewed the criteria for the mini-grant and at the meeting, the group determined the grant was a strong fit and voted to apply. The grant writing team included myself, Melissa Marsh, and the HREC Chairperson Simone Moy with input from nearly all the commissioners. The grant budget includes support for the stage rental supplies and presenters. And then the second one I have is from Simone Moy. Juneteenth has, sorry, Juneteenth has been celebrated for over a hundred and fifty-five years. Like many other American holidays, the goal of Juneteenth is to celebrate freedom. Last year, the HREC proudly sponsored a fun, family-friendly event for the whole community with education at the heart of the planning. Through a grassroots campaign, we raised over sixteen thousand dollars with the support of donations from the community, local businesses, and a fifteen hundred dollar grant from the city for the 2021 Juneteenth event. HREC is excitedly getting ready for the 2022 event and the opportunity to get assistance with the MCACA grant with a potential of four thousand dollars for planning. We have a goal to raise more than last year to make this year's event even better. We really hope that each of the City Council members will support this effort and we look forward to seeing you all at the event, thank you for your attention. Madison Heights, Simone Moy, HREC Chairwoman.
All right, thank you. Okay, next up, we have Communications C1, the first is Ann Alexander Bedd's resignation from the Library Advisory Board, can I get a motion from council on that, please?
Your Honor. I move that we accept the resignation of Alex Bedd from the Library Advisory Board, declare the seat vacant, and issue the appropriate certificate of thanks.
All right, thank you, is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
All right, thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, we have communications from the DPS Director for the emergency purchase of five replacement cars. Mrs. Marsh.
The adopted fiscal year 2022 budget included funding for the scheduled replacement of four police patrol cars, which was based on a condition analysis. Additionally, one patrol vehicle was recently involved in a serious crash and has been deemed a total loss by our insurance carrier. Due to the ongoing supply chain issues, the ordering window closed almost immediately before the city was able to submit any order for our vehicles. In researching the issue for a resolution, staff discovered that every department in the area was having the same difficulty purchasing new vehicles from all the big three automakers and that the big three are not doing any further production of police vehicles beyond the orders they have already received. Galia's Van Dyke Dodge, the dealership we typically use through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Program, had six two, 2021 model vehicles that fit our needs. With several other agencies negotiating for the purchase of these vehicles due to shortages, I authorized the emergency purchase for five patrol vehicles in order to secure our ability to purchase these cars. This purchase was made using the Oakland County Cooperative Pricing Agreement. This emergency purchase was approved in accordance with the City Charter, section two dash two-five-five, due to the extreme circumstances. The city has already taken delivery of these five vehicles on December twenty-first. Four of these vehicles were included in the current budget for the replacement, with one additional being replaced for insurance coverage. City Council is not required to approve this purchase since we have already taken ownership of these vehicles. This is for information only and we are requesting that City Council receive and file this for information.
All right, thank you, can I get a motion from council to receive and file this?
Your Honor.
Ms. Bliss.
So moved.
Thank you, can I get support?
Support.
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you, motion has been made and seconded to receive and file, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries, thank you, we will receive and file that. Next up are the two items that were added this evening, the first is the resignation of Councilman Soltis, so can I get a motion regarding that?
Your Honor. I would like to accept the resignation of Mr. Soltis as a member, an alternate council member on the Human Relations and Equity Commission.
All right, can I get support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you, motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, could I, I just want to say thank you to Dave for discussing it and just being amicable.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Please.
I'd like to reply back that, you know, we're honored to have you part of it and you've been doing a great job and I have all the confidence in the world that you'll continue doing it.
Any other discussion? Okay, I do have one question, do we need to receive something in writing regarding this? It's sort of a technical question?
You can just accept it now.
Okay, so we'll just accept it now, okay. So, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up is the appointment, Counselor Warbach?
Your Honor, I move that council appoints, as council alternate on the Human Relations and Equity Commission, Counselor Quinn Wright.
All right, thank you, is there support?
Support.
All right, thank you, motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries, all right. Next up, we have reports, first one is from the City Manager regarding the sale of parcel on Stevenson.
The city of Madison Heights owns parcel two-five-one-one-three-seven-seven-zero-one-nine, which is a small strip of land in front of Cole's Place Restaurant entrance located at two-nine-zero-two-two Stevenson Highway. We have been in a lease agreement with various property owners since nineteen seventy-four on this parcel. In mid-two thousand and twenty, we approached the owner of Cole's Place Restaurant located at two-nine-zero-two-two Stevenson Highway to discuss the expiring lease agreement. At that time, the owner requested to purchase this parcel to combine with the other lot parcels for possible redevelopment. The city has researched this idea and agrees that the city no longer has use of this parcel and the best use is redevelopment. Therefore, we have tentatively agreed to sell the parcel for the current taxable value of eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy dollars plus all associated costs, including engineering and legal services. We will reserve an easement for underground utilities and the right for the city and utility companies to perform any necessary maintenance and repairs. The owner will be required to continue to pay all taxes until the closing and ownership transfer and the parcel will be required to be combined with parcel two-five-one-one-three-seven-seven-zero-one-six. Following our City Charter, section twelve dash one, purchase or sell a property, the City Manager shall be responsible for the purchase and sale of all city property. The City Council by ordinance requiring five affirmative votes shall provide for the conditions and the amount in which all sales or purchases will be made without council approval. The Charter section requires comparative process for sale, however, this parcel- requires comparative process for sale. However, this parcel has no value to any other party. If Council concurs, appropriate action would be for City Council to authorize the sale of two nine zero two two Stevenson Highway or parcel two five one one three seven seven zero one nine for the above listed conditions and amount and authorize the City Manager and City Clerk to sign the purchase agreement on behalf of the city and Peter Abbo, who is the attorney for Cole's Place, as well as the owner of Cole's Place, is present tonight if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of Council?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve, that we grant the staff the authorization to make the sale of parcel two five dash one one dash three seven seven dash zero one nine. Is that the right parcel number? Okay, two nine zero two two Stevenson Highway, Madison Heights, Michigan.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and supported. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, just a question for the City Attorney. Is there any way to have, similar to what we did with a land swap previously, is there any way to have contingencies based on what could potentially go into that property? So you're merging the properties, you know, I for one would love to see it stay a restaurant, but the worst case scenario is it becomes like a car lot like we were talking about and the city has given extra space to do that from our sale of the land. Is there any way to put that into the negotiation?
Your Honor.
Mr. Sherman.
The, the land swap that Councilman Bliss referenced was a like-kind exchange of, of a similar type of property. In this case, the property is zoned M1 light industrial, which permits a variety of uses, including warehouse, manufacturing, retail, sales, trade schools, restaurants, and other items. So we can't limit it just to one thing such as a restaurant. Otherwise, that would be akin to, to spot zoning. We, we can't put in a deed restriction limiting it just to a restaurant. So at the present time, the master plan also has it listed as light industrial uses. So all of those uses would be, would be permitted. If it's not a specifically permitted use in a light industrial zone, the applicant would have the ability to come before Council to request special approval for, for any other type of retail or service use that would be consistent with a light industrial zoning district. Ms. Marsh mentioned that under the charter, five votes of Council are required to authorize the sale. I would suggest that the maker of the motion and support also authorize the City Manager not only, and City Clerk not only to sign the purchase agreement on this, on behalf of the city, but also as the transaction, if approved, moves forward, to authorize the mayor and City Clerk to sign all necessary documents in order to effectuate the sale.
All right.
What did I say?
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to say the City Manager and City Clerk rather than the mayor.
Okay.
Per the charter and per the ordinance.
Okay, so I'm going to amend the, on the motion I made for Council to approve and give the City Manager and the City Clerk the ability to sign the purchase, the, the documents for the sale of, hold on a second. Get the parcel number again. Parcel number twenty-five dash eleven dash three seven seven dash zero one nine, Stevenson Highway, Madison Heights, Michigan.
Your Honor, I just have a question for the City Attorney. Do we, do they, should Council put in the, the, the conditions for the sale that were in the report? Which were the reserve and easement for underground utilities and the right of the city and utility companies to perform any necessary maintenance and repairs?
That's, that's not necessary because it's already, it's already in the purchase agreement and Mr., Mr. Abbo and I have always already discussed that there would be a reservation of those items.
Thank you. All right, so Councilman Fleming has made an amendment in line with the attorney remarks. Counselor Orbach, a support. Do you agree?
I do.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion among Council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Just as a continuation, did we look into potentially doing a, a long-term lease agreement that would give us that flexibility?
Well, Your Honor.
Please.
We, we've been leasing this property, this little sliver, which not only includes the city right of way, it includes the, the access point, the driveway approach onto the property and a small portion of the applicant's parking lot. We've been leasing that first to Denny's in nineteen seventy-four. That lease lasted for thirty years. Then we had a different end user who we also leased the property to, where the terms, we leased it to Denny's for one dollar for a period of thirty years, one dollar per year. In addition, we then leased it to subsequent users on the same terms and conditions. We, we increased the price. We had, we leased it for five hundred dollars a year with an escalator and leasing it, leasing it hasn't solved the pro, it hasn't done much for the city and also hasn't solved the issue as to the, as to the parties that are using the property. We've, we've worked very hard on this for an extended period of time because of issues in the title work, which we've now resolved, and I would hope that Council would support this because the property only has value to the end user of the property as Ms. Marsh said in her report.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Yep.
I, I appreciate all of that. I, I just also know that, you know, we've, we have a duty to our residents and I kind of think that this is a if it ain't broke, don't fix it scenario and I'm okay with being the only no vote on this. But I think a extension, doing a long-term lease agreement just gives us flexibility. It's not like we can't sell this as a part of a larger development at that spot. I just would prefer to know what I'm voting yes on before that happens. And if it's just going to sit as it is today, I don't see any reason why we can't just extend the lease terms. But I'm one vote and I'm okay with that, but I will be voting no.
Your Honor, I would love to know, I read all the, the supporting information here and like what was the purpose of the original, like, it was just the, the, the lines were not drawn to, to the right specs or why is that parcel belong to the city and the rest of it doesn't? I don't understand.
Well, Your Honor.
Please, Mr. Sherman.
That's a good question that Counselor Orbach is asking because the title company raised an issue as to whether it belonged to the county of Oakland rather than the city of Madison Heights. But in nineteen sixty-four, the State Highway Commission ceded the ownership and control of that sliver to the city. The city has been maintaining it. A portion of it includes a berm, a sidewalk, and a small portion of the parking lot for the end user. And as Ms. Marsh indicated, the only, the only party that it has value to is the party that's utilizing the parent parcel that O nineteen is connected to. So, so it's just kind of an anomaly. When we looked on Stevenson Road between Twelve and Fourteen Mile Road, which was also given to the city by the Oakland County Road Commission in Oakland County in the nineteen sixties, this doesn't exist as you go down Stevenson Highway all the way to fourteen. So it really is, it really is a bit of an anomaly and it's the only access point to the property. So anybody who's trying to enter the property has to go through this little sliver in order to access the principal use of the parcel. There's also a vacant, unimproved parcel just to the north of that and at some point we would expect that to be developed as well. And once there is a development on the back end, which we anticipate soon, it'll come back before Council for their consideration and various approvals.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Council? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those against, say no.
No.
All right, thank you. Motion carries five one. Okay, next up is the resolution supporting the application for the Arts and Cultural Affairs mini grant project. Mrs. Marsh.
The Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs, or the MCA-CA, provides grants to encourage, initiate, and facilitate an enriched cultural environment in Michigan. Funds are appropriated each year in the state budget to fund activities. This year, the MCA-CA has partnered with regional services agencies throughout the state within fifteen regions determined by counties to offer mini grants for projects up to four thousand dollars for special opportunities to address cultural programs locally. The HREC has asked to request funding to support this year's Juneteenth cultural program. The application was completed and submitted through the city on behalf of the city's HREC. The grant application has been submitted ahead of the Ju, January fifteenth deadline with review pending approval by City Council. Special thank you to the HREC volunteers Nicole Fox and Simone Moy for their assistance writing this grant. The HREC recommends that City Council approve the attached resolution supporting the application to the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs for four thousand dollars to support the 2022 Juneteenth event to be held on June the eighteenth.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of Council?
Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion for City Council to approve the resolution supporting the application to the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs for four thousand to support the 2022 Juneteenth event to be held June eighteenth, 2022.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Please.
I would just like to explain a little bit more as to why I support this. I think this is a fantastic opportunity to create a win-win for the city, to yet again be a pioneer in celebrating this new national holiday and to save a little bit of cost for the city. And so for that reasons and more, I think it's a great opportunity. And also, it helps to save with some of the coming costs that we don't know are around the corner. And so I just think it's, it's a job well done by the HREC and a great opportunity to save the city some costs.
All right, thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes, please.
I just want to extend my thanks to Simone Moy about, and Nicole Fox for their work. Once again, grant applications are labor-intensive. I've, myself, have done this same grant application for a different organization in the past and it takes a lot of work, a lot of writing and a ton of work, and I appreciate their, their work on this. And those of you that were able to attend the twenty, 2021 Juneteenth celebration, some of the cultural events, you know, some of the cultural things that we were able to bring in included the Brazilian art corral, spoken word artists, musicians of all kinds. It was, it was just a really phenomenal event. Unfortunately, it rained all day, or most of the day, so that really stunk. But other than that, I'm just thrilled that we have, you know, every, every year we can add more, we can build, build upon itself, and I want to thank those who made the effort to put this application together.
Thank you. Any other discussion from Council?
Your Honor.
Please.
Just a thank you to the volunteers who put this application together and I, I wish everybody luck in getting it. It'd be great to be able to expand the event. It was a great event last year. I expect it's going to be even better this year. And what's cool about these summer events that we have now is all of them are partially, if not fully funded by donations and grants and manned by volunteers. And so I think that says a lot about our city, that we're able to, you know, benefit from so many people who want to make a difference, that they're willing to spend their time putting together a grant proposal like this. And so I'm appreciative and I just wish the HREC and the city as a whole some good luck in getting this grant.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so I just want to clarify, I don't think it rained the whole time. I think it rained at the start and then it poured at the end. But yeah, I, I hope this, I hope this goes through. And with that, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have F1 from the DPS Director, the Police Department Sanitary Sewer Replacement.
The fiscal year 2021 budget included funding for the replacement for the suspended sanitary plumbing in the lower level of the Police Department, which was carried forward to fiscal year 2022. This project was prioritized after the failure of the cast iron trap caused a severe leakage. Several other issues are also manifesting themselves, including the transient odor of sewer in the lower level and west stairway and hallway on an ongoing backup issue, which is partially due to the overall condition of the plumbing itself. Multiple attempts have been made to identify and correct this issue to no avail. In order to address the issue completely, staff first had a thorough test of the sanitary system conducted, which included a recommendation to move forward. The plumbing is original to the building and consists of no hub cast iron, which binds each ten-foot segment fitting and fixture with a rubber and steel band. The smoke test inspection determined that nearly every one of those bands has dry rotted, causing odor, leakage, and misalignment issues. Additionally, several segments of pipe are showing signs of rotting through. Although these bands could be individually replaced, as well as the affected section of pipe, the labor required to do so is not cost-effective when compared to a total replacement of plumbing. The original bid was written for a like-for-like replacement with no hub cast iron. An alternate bid was provided and is preferred to replace with a solvent-welded PVC. This not only will provide a much more long-lasting and maintenance-free system, but is also over eleven thousand dollars cheaper than the cast iron option. Our fire marshal has also confirmed that this would be acceptable based on code. The sole responsive bidder was Allied Building Service Company of Detroit, Michigan. This is a firm with extensive municipal experience, which provides all manner of turnkey building trade services. Because Allied is an all-in-one company, they would not need to subcontract services in order to perform this project efficiently. When considering the serious difficulty in sourcing contractors due to the labor shortage and supply service chains, the additional due diligence performed to determine the necessary scope of work and the highly positive reference checks and experience of the vendor, staff believes that this bid and vendor is in the best interest of the city and will provide the most long-lasting and economical solution to this ongoing issue. Staff and I recommend two motions. First, since this project is over the initial budget amount, we first request that Council consider a budget amendment for twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars to account one oh one three oh one ninety-eight seventy. That's Police Department improvements. This would require a supermajority, also five votes, of Council. Second, if the budget amendment is approved, we would request that City Council award the bid for the Police Department sanitary plumbing replacement to Allied Building Service Company of Detroit for thirty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
All right, thank you. So we have two motions that will need to be done, two motions and two votes. Can I get a motion from Council regarding the first?
Your Honor.
Bliss.
I move that we approve a budget amendment for twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars to account one oh one three oh one nine eight seventy zero zero zero.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, I will just remind Council that we need to have a minimum of five votes for this to pass. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries six zero. And can I get a motion for the second, please?
Your Honor.
Counselor Orbach.
I move that Council awards the bid for the Police Department Sanitary Plumbing Replacement to Allied Building Service Company of Detroit for a total project cost of thirty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Counselor Wright.
Support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Please.
I was just going to say, God bless the police officers and the staff who have been working in a building with the leaking fumes of that system. I am sorry it took so long for it to get fixed.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, say no. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Next up, ordinances. First one from the CED Director, the rezoning request twenty-one dash zero one, ordinance number two one seven five regarding the property on Lennox. Mrs. Marsh.
The applicant Marish Architecture requests the rezoning of one parcel of land at two six seven eight three Lennox Avenue from R three residential to P one vehicular parking district. The property is located on the west side of Lennox Avenue, south of Eleven Mile Road. The subject property is approximately point one five acres in area and is currently improved with a nine hundred and sixty-seven square feet, single-family resident and detached garage. The applicant requests the rezoning in order to accommodate additional off-street parking for a proposed commercial development. This rezoning would require for almost, would be required for almost any type of redevelopment. The applicant has discussed conceptual plans for this proposed development, which currently include a restaurant and either apartments or a hotel. The only permitted
The only permitted use in the P1 district is off-street parking areas and residential buildings. Existing residential uses are permitted as a conforming use. The P1 district includes minimum parking lot setback design and screening requirements, which will need to be satisfied as part of the site plan review. When reviewing the rezoning request, the City Council should review the proposed district's consistency and compatibility with adjacent land uses and the future land use map as laid out in the master plan. At the December 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, they reviewed the findings and recommendation and recommend City Council approve the rezoning request, PRZN 21-0001, upon first reading and schedule the public hearing for February the fourteenth, 2022. And the petitioner is present here tonight if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2175 on first reading and schedule the public hearing for February fourteenth, 2022.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilor Robach.
All support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
Just a question to clarify. When we discussed this in the Planning Commission meeting, which was unfortunately the week of Christmas, so that was a, that was a fun meeting. But when we discussed it, I think we, we were going to be seeing the special approval at the second reading of this one. Is that still in the queue? Will we see both at the same time?
I see Matt shaking and said yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion? All right, then. Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up from the CED Director is a rezoning request 21-02, ordinance 2176 regarding Osman Street.
The applicant Woodpile Barbecue requests to rezone one parcel of land at 26744 Osman Street from R3 Residential to B3 General Business District. The property is located at the southeast corner of East 11 Mile Road on Osman Street. The subject property is approximately two-tenths of an acre in the area and is currently improved with a 910 square foot, single-family resident and detached garage. The applicant requests the rezoning in order to accommodate additional off-street parking for Woodpile Barbecue located immediately to the east of the subject site. The applicant has provided conceptual plans for the proposed parking lot. The subject site is located immediately to the west of Woodpile Barbecue, which is zoned B3. Properties immediately to the east, north, and west are also zoned B3 and improved with commercial uses, while the property to the south is zoned R3 and improved with a single-family residence. The subject site is located within the boundaries of the DDA. The future land use designation of the subject site is commercial. Per the master plan, the commercial designation is intended to accommodate a broad range of goods and services. The B3 zoning district aligns with future land use plans and the vision of the master plan. At their December 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, they reviewed the findings and recommend that the City Council approve rezoning request, PRZN 21-0002, upon first reading and schedule a public hearing for February the fourteenth.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2176 on first reading and schedule the public hearing for February fourteenth.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Councilor Robach.
All support.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Last up from the CED Director, ordinance number 2173, the zoning text amendment 21-09, off-street parking. This is a second reading. Mrs. Marsh.
Proposed zoning ordinance 2173 sets minimum parking requirements for specific use types often presented as ratios based on building area or maximum occupancy rates. Many of these minimum parking ratios were originally adopted to satisfy peak demand rather than average demand. As a result, many properties within the city have been developed with an oversupply of parking, leading to large expanses of unused impervious surface. The proposed amendments aim to reduce minimum parking space requirements to more appropriately align them with average parking demand. Staff proposes these text amendments to modernize minimum parking space requirements and parking design standards. The proposed amendments introduce new definitions, modify minimum parking space requirements for individual uses, provide for administrative flexibility in reducing minimum space requirements, and provide clarification on alternative parking plans such as remote parking or shared parking. Further, the proposed amendments strengthen parking lot design and screening standards. Staff and I recommend council approve ordinance 2173 on second and final reading.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
For the hat trick, I guess. I, I move that we approve ordinance 2173 on the second and final reading.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilor Robach.
I do have a question. You know, we've seen this. I, I overall completely support this idea of, because there's so many places that have just this abundance of parking and it's the permeable, the non-permeable spaces and it's bad for the environment. There's lots of reasons why I think this is a good idea. I'm also concerned about potential issues in the future where we have businesses like the COVID testing site that's on 12 Mile. They have parking that would be appropriate for an average time, but you know, peak time has lasted now for two years before, and it comes, it gets peaker, bigger peaks, but it hasn't gone down in a couple of years. And I'm just concerned about this potentially having some of those issues going forward. I don't necessarily think we need to completely revisit the, these, the ordinance as rewritten, but I want to make sure that the zoning board really keeps an eye on that as we're going forward. If that becomes a bigger issue, we saw today, we had two properties that added space for more parking. And so, you know, downsizing it isn't always the best idea. I just want us to be very careful about that going forward.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up is the minutes. If I can get a motion to approve the special City Council meeting minutes from December 6th.
Your Honor. I move that we approve special City Council, special City Council meeting minutes of December 6th of 21.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Then we have the special City Council meeting minutes of December 13th. And I get a motion, council?
Your Honor.
Councilor Robach.
I move that we approve the special City Council meeting minutes of December 13th of 21.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
Mr. Fleming, is that you?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And lastly, we have the regular City Council meeting minutes of December 13th. Can I get a motion from council to approve?
Your Honor, motion to approve the minutes from December 13th, 2021.
Thank you. You got a support?
Your Honor, all support.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Thank you. And with that, that concludes our regular business, and I invite closing count, closing comments from council, starting with Mr. Bliss.
All right, well, first, sorry to Councilor Robach, you did not get that hat trick.
I know.
I was rooting for you over here. I was rooting for you. But also, it looks like Councilman Soltes will have a little bit more time for the election commission, which I know that our clerk's really excited about. On a, on a more serious note, I'm, I'm excited about some of the changes that the Planning Commission has been making. You saw today the, the parking ordinance that we passed through. One of the things that had been approved is some of the ability of our businesses, particularly our restaurants, to have outside seating. So I'd like to ask and request that staff reach out to some of those establishments as best as we're capable of and let them know their options there. I don't want to, I don't want any of our restaurant owners to feel like they, they have to come to a council meeting. There are things already in place. We've already thought through this and, and they can make those extensions, not just because of COVID times, but because they can, and it's good business and it's something that we should continue to encourage going forward. Outdoor seating is kind of a way of the future. And we should also, you know, it's a little different when there's, when there's liquor sales, and so I definitely acknowledge that. But I'd love for us to let them know what that process is. And even to those businesses where it'd be automatic, things like coffee shops, I think we should reach out to them as well. I think it's just the way of the world, and frankly, our world right now is like a never-ending episode of Black Mirror. And I don't know when it's going to end. So I think we need to be as proactive as we can for the business owners, because again, I'd hate for them to think that the only way to get our attention is to come to a council meeting. I know our staff is, is very proactive already, and I'd like to make sure that we continue to showcase that to the restaurants and coffee shops and everything else that are all struggling right now. I'd also like to, we, we approved the, the minutes of the, the special council meeting on 12/6. For those of you at home thinking, that's kind of weird, we didn't have a official council meeting that day. Well, we had our strategic planning session and we dove into a lot of details for kind of what the future of, of the city is going to look like. With City Manager Marsh, we changed the goal-setting process to this more, I would say, deep and detailed analysis of what the direction of the city is going to be. And there was a lot of great stuff that came out of it. I would like to formally request here, one of the things that, that I talked about there, I think is a, is a very good avenue for us going forward. I don't think it's any secret that I'd like to see something like a splash pad or a major parks initiative that is ADA compliant, that anybody, regardless of, you know, their age and ability can utilize. And so I would like to make sure that we start setting aside into a fund, you know, a certain amount of money a year. I'd personally like to see $50,000, but I think, you know, that can be dependent upon the year, it can be dependent upon the budget. But let's set it aside for special upgrades. When things like grant proposals come up, if we've got that money sitting aside for a special improvement, we'll then be able to leverage it to be able to do something bigger that we otherwise wouldn't. A splash pad is going to run us 500 to 750,000, especially to ensure that we have operating costs for at least five years. Normally, that's not going to be possible, but if we manage to save $250,000 over the course of five years, now it's plausible if we're able to get a matching grant, like a three, a three X matching grant. So, or a public-private partnership, where all of these things have become possible if we have the money budgeted and assigned like we did today with the tennis courts. I'd like us to kind of expand that and set aside that fund. And so I, I would ask that my colleagues on council support that as we get into the budget season. It, to me, it's not like we can't go into the piggy bank if we need to do park maintenance in a down economic year where we don't have the funds. But I would rather have it there in good years, because then we can leverage it if something comes up. That's it tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
I just want to say kudos to City Manager Melissa Marsh for being proactive with the vehicles for the police department. That's one of those fine details that like sometimes can be missed, but that it will in the long run save the city and the citizens a lot of money and be good for our officers. So kudos on that. And also just a reminder that MLK Day is next Monday. So I want everyone to just kind of, if you can, just take a moment. I want to challenge you to take a moment to understand what that means and recognize it wasn't a national holiday until the eighties. And Juneteenth wasn't a national holiday until 2020. And so that's significant, because that means that there's opportunities for us all still to grow. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman.
Your Honor, the only thing I would add is Happy New Year to everyone, and let's hope for a much better 2022. Amen.
Mrs. Marsh, nothing this evening. Clerk's office this evening, nothing? Councilor Robach.
I don't have anything tonight. Thanks. Shocking, I don't.
This last week, weekend was Police Appreciation Day, and I wanted to say for myself that I really appreciate, I appreciate all the hard work that our police department does and, and also our firefighters too, to that matter. You know, what's going on now with a lot of people, with all the hospitals and everybody's health. The firefighters and the EMTs are doing a lot of work, and it's very thankful for them too. Also, one last thing I wanted to say is this month is National Human Trafficking Awareness Month for this entire month, and our police department is very involved in bringing awareness to that, but also fighting on task force that are really combating human trafficking within our city and, and whatnot. So if you can, there's a website that you can go to from DHS for, for human trafficking, and you can look at the signs and also make yourself aware of what to look out for, for, for human trafficking. That's all I have for today.
Thank you. Mr. Soltes.
Yeah, I got a lot of stuff to talk about, huh? So I guess that's fine. So I, you know, with this current situation, I've been in healthcare for close to 18 years, from EMS to like administrator in ER. I was exposed to all kinds of different things, through positive TV, patients, MRSA, even when those Ebola protocols that came out, when there was a big scare before. I was even exposed to C. diff, if you ever, ever heard of that. It's terrible. Look it up. It's a nasty bug. But so trust me, when I, you know, when I tell you wear a mask, it's so important. Get vaccinated, booster, do us all a favor. I am, I think if, you know, to be honest, I think if we didn't have a president before that kind of lied about this virus in the very beginning, I don't think we would be in such a situation, this atmosphere, very divisive. You know, we've got to remember, in healthcare, we were always told, you know, take care of ourselves first, because you can't, if you don't, you won't be able to help anybody else. And I, but in this, we're in this all together. I think part of the problem was also that we never looked at it as a worldwide, you know, effort, because we saw, you know, these viruses are coming from all different parts of the world, and it affects us all. And, and we need to really start to stand together as a, as an entire world. And on a good note, I'm starting coaching basketball again at the rec league in Madison Heights. Hopefully, we won't have to cut it short like we did before two years ago. I'm coaching the younger group, so it should be fun. However, I'm really disappointed that they don't have adjustable rims, right? So they're going to have to use, these little kids are going to have to shoot at a 10-foot rim, which is kind of disappointing. I mean, even at, at the college and pro levels, they, the accuracy is probably about 50%. So we'll just have to make sure they don't get discouraged. Lastly, I requested from the state of Michigan the latest child maltreatment data. If you remember, maybe not, I requested this info a few years ago. In fact, I presented it here at the council chambers, that data. It certainly was disturbing. And so this time I had to, for you, it, City Manager helped me out. Had to pay $50 in my own pocket for this sheet of paper. And so I, I'm going to prepare it again for a presentation here at council. But this time, I, I saw something that I found very disturbing. I discovered that although the data is reported on two major categories. One is the abuse is designated and found, and the second one is the abuse incident was unfounded. So that can, it, it doesn't necessarily look at the, the actual individual person that was abused or neglected, but the cases of it, okay? So what I saw this time was that we have a problem with the majority of den- So what I saw this time was that we have a problem with the majority of denied cases or unfounded. That's about 75% to 78% of the assigned investigations, now even on the Michigan level, that were unfounded. So that's three quarters or more investigations were unfounded of abuse and neglect. To me, that's crazy. So I never, and I replied back, you know, I, my issue was that these denied abuse cases were consistently at a high percentage. To me, that doesn't make sense, year after year, because we're talking three, four years in a row. To me, that means either people who are obligated to report, or individuals calling CPS are overall incorrect 75% of the time. That doesn't make sense to me, especially the professionals who are obligated to report. You're telling me that they're always 75% wrong? So I said that to them. Of course, I didn't get a response back. So the other thing is that other, the CPS, to me, which makes sense, is that CPS investigations are flawed somehow, and something is inaccurate with the investigation. And there has been a significant errors and issues in the news regarding Michigan CPS, or since such a backlog of pending investigations. By the time CPS gets out there, the evidence could be lost or not meet that threshold. So anyhow, it'd be interesting if they do respond back to me, but I am going to compile the data and present it at some point in time, so I just hope everybody comes out or at least watches about that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of issues this evening with respect to the urgent care on 12 Mile. I spoke with the city manager maybe two weeks ago, because there's lines again. So I know that the police, I think, were patrolling for the cars, and that was more of a parking issue. I'm not sure, Mrs. Marsh, can you see what she can figure out? Because yeah, if we're having issues on 12 Mile now, then this needs to be addressed. I mean, COVID numbers are going up, people are having a hard time getting tested, it's, you know, the, the people at the clinic are doing everything that they can. I know that, I guess you wait in line, and then when you get there, you give your information, and then you wait in your car, and so they don't have a lot of people in there, but then of course, that's the assumption that everybody has a car, which not everybody does, and then where are they parked? Because you can't all park there when you have the lines like that. Obviously, people are parked down the street. So it is being looked at, it will be looked at again. I mean, everyone's, everyone's trying, so thank you for bringing that. I had not heard about the 12 Mile traffic, so we'll look into that. And then I think we're looking into the extensions for the outdoor seating as well. Just, yeah, two years ago, we were starting to hear about this. Last year, we were in it, and then we were starting to come out, and now it looks like nobody really knows. I don't know how well you see this on, if you're watching, but we have the Plexiglas now, so we are obviously back in person, everyone is in person, we're all masked, and we've got the Plexiglas between us. If the state changes the rules, then we will be going virtual, but at this point in time, I've heard nothing about that, but that's what we were doing until June, I think. So we've really only been back for six, seven months. Well, I was here, but you know, we, we haven't opened this up until the summer. So we're all just, we're all just playing it by ear, you know? I don't think that people, I don't think anyone really knows, you know? We're all, we're all trying to figure it out, and as it comes out, we, we adjust to what we need to do, and you know, we all want to keep moving everything forward. So yeah, I mean, that's, that's really it. This was, this was a long meeting, but I just do want to mention quickly what Mr. Bliss was talking about with the planning, the Planning Commission. The ordinances that we approved, the two that we approved today, we did those pretty quickly, but there was a lot of conversation that took place at the Planning Commission about these. And this was one of the things, is that we're here, you know, twice a month, we have our meetings, this one's gone just over an hour and a half, we'll be out of here in less than two hours, but there's a lot of background that you don't see. There's a lot of work that we're doing in the background, you know, whether it's staff working on something, or the council members working on, on their projects with their boards and commissions, there's a lot that you don't see. So just because we're, you know, we voted those through in five minutes, we spent a lot more time, and even the time that we took at the Planning Commission to talk about that, that was us talking, that Planning Commission staff put in however much time before that. So things take time, it's all slowly, slowly coming together. We are looking at, you know, bringing more businesses to the DDA that fit with the DDA, the idea of the DDA, their vision and the master plan, and I know that staff has been looking, and I'm going to request again, that staff works with Ms. Otto to see if, you know, we can find a place for them in the city that isn't in the DDA, because luxury or not, a car dealership is not really what I think anyone envisions with the DDA. So our next meeting is January 24th. The time is now 9:08. The meeting is adjourned.